Please find your seat. We'll call this meeting to order. If you could all please rise, Pastor Russ Wynn with the Springs Church will lead us in prayer this morning, this afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray together, please. Father, we come to you. We ask your blessings to be on this very first council that is meeting in this brand-new year. We thank you, Lord, for the men and women who serve here, give of their time, their energy, their talents to legislate and to guide this beautiful city. We pray for fresh vision, fresh wisdom, Lord, as they deal with the agenda that's before them today. Be with our law enforcement officers, be with our first responders. Thank you for their lives, Lord, for serving our country and serving our community. Bring them home safe every evening, every day, God, as they go and do their work for our city. Bring them back home safely. We pray your hand upon them, in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Sheriff Mike Scott will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Here.
Councilman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Well, good evening, everybody. How are you? We have a nice crowd here this evening, so if everybody could please come on in and find your seats, that would be great. We're going to open up tonight with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. I see movement, but I don't see anybody from the public coming forward to speak. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to accept the consent agenda and a second further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. Item A is a presentation of the certificates to the winners of the Lee County Sheriff's Office 2018 Essay Contest. Bobby? If you'd like to lead us, please.
Good afternoon. Good evening. On behalf of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, we'd like to thank the essay winners for being here and winning their essays. They're all pretty happy and loving what it actually came across. And I just want to let you know that the theme of the essays was, if you had one wish for the holiday season, what would it be and why would it be? And we had 21 winners from Spring Creek, Benita Elementary School, and also Benita Charter. And these winners were given $200 gift certificates, bicycles, and it was 21 winners. And out of these 2,500 essays, in which the Benita Springs CP unit read every single one of them, every one, these 21 winners came to fruition. And right now, I want to pass it over to Bobby, and he's going to announce all the winners.
Thank you. Mayor, Counsel, I want to appreciate your support with us. Your partnership with us means a lot. As Lieutenant said, 2,500 essays, deputy has to go through them, read and pick one winner, and that's it. The only one. What we look for is punctuation, we look for their spelling, and we look for their story. Some of them talked about helping somebody with cancer. Somebody wanted to help prisoners that are in jail and talk to them and show them what it means to strive and be really good, and he's here right now. Some were, you know, wanting to help homeless. A big one for me is veterans. The reason why these guys won is they put somebody else first. They didn't, you know, say, you know, I want a boat, I want a million dollars. They put somebody else before them, and that's why they won. So with that, we had a lot of huge supporters this year. Our first one was Target. They donated six bicycles to all of our fifth graders. That's a huge support for us because bicycles now, they're $150 apiece. So I got to give thanks to Target. Coastal Landscape Supply, they auctioned off a pallet of sod, and that's how they were able to give us money in return. Distinctive Tenting on US 41, he dropped off a check to us. And then all of our local businesses, they would allow us to put a money jar out to each business. And if you see that jar, that's all for the kids here in Benita. That stays here in Benita, it's for our kids in Benita. And out of those jars, we raised about $1,200, just in that. So every little bit helps. So I got to give a big thanks to all of our supporters. I'm going to have Sergeant Paul Walsh come up and announce the winners.
Good afternoon, everybody. City Council, Mayor, Sheriff Scott, law enforcement friends. Mr. One of the main sponsors and one of the most influential persons in this program is Mr. Cooper. As a principal of Benita Elementary School, he went above and beyond to ensure the kids were ready for this date, so we thank you too. Appreciate it. So in moving forward, we're going to call the names. Some of the winners are here, some couldn't make it. When we call your name, please come forward. From Spring Creek Elementary, we have Sherilyn Sosa Morales. Sherilyn, where are you? Come on.
Good job, Sherilyn.
Also from Spring Creek, we have David Alexander Enriquez.
Mr. Cooper, you want to join us?
Yes, sir.
From Benita Elementary School, we have Emily Santiago.
We also have Mr. Trejean Quince.
Moving on to Benita Charter School, we have Ethan Giamatti.
We got the best time ever. We got a bunch of Nerf guns and all kinds of stuff, video games. It was like the best date ever.
Samantha Marsh.
So now it's picture time. Families want to come forward, get pictures. One more winner. One more winner. Who do we have?
Jose Fernandez.
Jose, come forward, buddy.
I hope today I forget my neighbor, Riley Jones. Come on, buddy.
Did I miss anybody? Tom, if you want to come forward for a picture. Deputies come forward, please.
Maybe the council can come forward, too.
Just stay in the back.
The mayor, yeah.
Come on over here. Come on this side.
Thanks to see you, Mike. Nice to see you.
Guys had to read them all, didn't they?
Yeah, so.
I think it's a girl.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Good job, guys.
I think it's a violation or something.
Derek, I'm scared. You guys don't be coming up. Tell us we got someone like...
Yeah, I thought we were getting some like sunshine or some other...
Well, congratulations. Could we give them another round of applause, please? Very nice work. Great work. Great leadership. Continue that great leadership. If I could have Sheriff Mike Scott and his family come forward, please. Well, you know, there's a lot of things that could be said, and I know we want to get out of here before midnight, but for me to try to encapsulate what Sheriff Mike Scott has not only meant to Lee County but to Benita Springs, long before we were even a city, before most of us knew where southwest Florida was, let alone Benita Springs, Mike Scott knew where Benita Springs was, and he knew where Lee County was, and his family knew where Lee County was. For the years of service, there will never be another Sheriff Mike Scott. That's no offense to my good friend Carmine Marcino. That's just understood amongst us brothers and friends. Your dedication and your devotion to Benita Springs and Lee County is second to none, and this is just a very small token of our appreciation to you and to your family and their sacrifices for helping you be the amazing sheriff that you were and continue to be. This is proudly presented to Sheriff Mike Scott on behalf of the City of Benita Springs in sincere appreciation for all your years of dedicated service to the City of Benita Springs and in recognition of over 30 years of public service to Lee County. God bless and thank you. 1988 to 2018. Those dates sound right? Krista, do they sound right? Congratulations. Congratulations.
My goodness. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I will tell you, I accept this on behalf of, of course, my family, as the mayor said, but also the men and women that you see here in this room. The sheriff is only as good as the team around him or her. The first three letters of the word sheriff after all are S-H-E, and I do have comrades in the state that are lady sheriffs, but the men and women at the sheriff's office are the sheriff's office. And the people we serve, folks like you and so many others in the community, it was the honor and the privilege of a lifetime. And we made decisions based on family choices, that priorities that came into focus. Most recently, my wife's mom passed and some other reasons. But I will tell you that it's a happy night tonight, not a sad night. I do accept this on behalf of the men and women of the sheriff's office I stood with for so long. Thirty years is a long time. And in fact, I'm surprised that they didn't bring those 2,100 essays to me and say, hey, you're retired, you read these things. But those are the types of things that the men and women of the agency do all the time. So again, the City of Benita, it's aptly named, it's beautiful, and I humbly accept this. It'll be proudly displayed in my office at home, and you're in good hands. I can assure you that these folks are so dedicated. Captain Lee, you and your team, fantastic. Mayor, thank you so much for your friendship, and thank you for this recognition. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Well, you have to get a picture. No, no, she's going to get upset with you.
Krista, you're very much... If we could give Sheriff and Mrs. Scott a warm round of applause from Benita Springs. Thank you very, very much. We're now going to move on to mayor and council member items, and item 8A is direct staff to consult with the Lee County Sheriff's Office. Look at this, regarding requirements of additional protections at gas pumps that will better enable law enforcement to know if a gas pump is secure from credit card skimming. And this is Deputy Mayor Peter O'Flynn, Green Sheet 19-01003. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. So I've had some chats with Sheriff Marcino about this. It's been in the news as well, card skimming at gas stations. It's not every gas station that's susceptible. And people on council probably know this, but the Lee County Sheriff's Office has an economic crimes unit that does a great job, and they do regularly inspect as much as they can, the gas stations, to see whether or not there are skimmers there. So the thought here is to have our city manager simply talk to the sheriff's office about what we can do to help them, if anything, by putting in somewhat more stringent requirements that they can enforce with respect to credit card skimming. And I could get into detail about it, but I think frankly, that's Arlene's job when she talks to Sheriff Marcino. So that said, I'd like to make a motion for that purpose.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Great work, Peter. Thank you. Item 8B, direct staff to look into a cost feasible way of screening the Dixie moon structure from the view of passersby considering the current condition. Direct staff to prepare and present to council a complete fee, or excuse me, cost feasible options regarding the structure. Deputy Mayor O'Flynn, Green Sheet 1901004. Peter.
Yeah, so when a Dixie moon was moved, no one's fault, what appeared on the news site was perhaps not what we thought was likely to appear, just the nature of the beast in terms of the move. We've gotten emails with ideas. Some city council people have come up with ideas. I think it makes the most sense for considering the condition of the building, to put staff in a position where they can take the time to look at various ideas, because, you know, we've had everything from just kind of basic stuff to full historic rehabilitation. Come back with those options to us with a suggestion, and then let council make a decision as to what the treatments will be, consistent with our budget. And I thought that it may take some time, and it's been in the condition for some time. So if Arlene is able to figure out a way to screen it, like construction sites are screened, and maybe something nice on the front of it, like you sometimes see a screen with an image of the building, it'll give them some breathing room to do their diligence, do their work, and come back to us. So that's my idea.
Right. Right, and I know there's been some activity. Any updates, Matt, from your end, things, or Arlene, or?
Mayor, I just wanted to, Mike Gibson is running a few minutes late, and he did want to listen in. Would it be okay if we called him real quick?
Absolutely.
He wants to listen in to the conversation.
Absolutely.
He's just letting us know he's running behind.
Absolutely. I guess, Amy, like you reminded me last time, do we need a motion to dial Mike in? I think we might, right?
Well, the reason, only if he's just listening in while he's on his way here and he's not participating, then I don't think we need to go through that process.
We can make a quick motion, let him talk.
Sure. Make a motion, he's unavailable.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to allow Councilman Gibson to participate by telephone momentarily. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt.
Aye.
Mike, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay, dynamite. Fantastic. You're in on the discussion. And Peter had just kind of read through, and Peter, do you want a quick synopsis?
Yeah, sure, Mike. It's, you know, what I said in a nutshell was, there's been a lot of hard work put into this, including people on city council put work into it. I think it's kind of obvious that as moved, it was impacted in relation to the move more than was anticipated. So, you know, we have various ideas coming forward, and I just want to establish a process where that is put to staff to, you know, feel whatever ideas are out there and come back to council with options. And that may take a little bit of time, so in the meantime, I think all of us would agree, it doesn't really look great. So put up, you know, and staff can figure out what this should be, some appropriate screening that would exist for nice construction sites. So the building is not visible from 41. So that's the idea. I'm not here to say what we should do or not do. Just want to give staff some breathing room to do their job.
No, that's great. And Matt, did you have any updates, or Arlene?
I can just kind of speak to what's been going on. We've been working with Councilman Forbes to really to identify what the historic openings were, that what people are used to seeing in the recent past were really not the original window opening sizes. The building had been modified. So we've worked to get that measured up, identified, so that ultimately we can get some ideas of cost in terms of retrofitting with the windows to bring back to city council for consideration. So we've identified what we think those openings are and are working on a document that we can give to vendors to get some ideas of cost there for the windows and doors.
Okay.
I'd also like to consider whatever else is appropriate.
No, absolutely.
You know, as opposed to a full restoration, which I think we would all like. The question is what the expense is, considering our other priorities.
Do we have the historic preservation board involved?
Yes, we've been working with them, and we, to Councilman O'Flynn's point, we also have reached out to an architecture firm to get an idea of cost to start to put the additional pieces together. But right now, the work that's currently happening has really been with the opening size.
And updates have been provided to the historic preservation board along the process, and there also might be additional inquiries about what funding source, what funding they have as well.
Well, addressing the other aspect that you brought up, I'm in favor of doing some kind of canvas screening with some kind of pretty picture on or something, if that's feasible. But if it's not, then come back with us. But I like that idea, that concept. And the idea of having kind of a representation of where we're going with it, you know, like maybe Sam could draw a picture, we could put it up there, is kind of appealing to me. You know how they do it on one of those housing things, and then they open them up and they show the reveal?
Oh, yeah, TV.
That's what they do.
Right.
So I'd make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mike, and you're, Mike, you're listening in, so I figured you might have some conversation.
I have to deal with this thing every day. I look at it, and I'm telling you, looking at that fence with screening on it, it's going to be worse than looking at that building. Aesthetically, and then also you got to worry about people getting in there. With that fence and screen, you're not going to be able to turn it on. Right now, I can see if somebody's going in there and hanging out in the building or sleeping in there or whatnot. I would much rather just keep chugging along, let's look at closing this thing up. I think we should do like what we did with the artist cottages. You know, when they moved them, they just put plywood over the windows and the doors, and they painted it to look like windows and doors. And then at the end, they auctioned them off to raise money. I have those windows and doors on my building. I think that would be a better way to go. I'd say I don't want to waste any money on fencing and screening, and like I said, I just think it's going to look terrible. Worse than it is now.
Okay, counsel, what's your?
Well, I tend to agree a little bit with Mike on that. My question is going to be, you know, fencing and doing all this is going to cost, you know, some money. It's not going to be free. And, you know, what kind of timeline are we talking for this? I mean, it's been moved for, you know, a couple, three months now. I mean, are we a year away from doing anything, or are we, you know, weeks to months away from, you know, even like Mike said, if they would just throw plywood up, paint it the same color, and, you know, faux paint some windows on it, would look better than it does now. And is that going to do any damage to the wood that we have, to the structure now? Just some thoughts. I'd hate to throw good money after bad.
I think if you're going to faux, I mean...
Have them explore how to secure it.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. I mean, if it's a better idea to faux paint some windows on some plywood, and that looks good, I don't care. I'm not, I'm just saying, it doesn't look great.
No, I understand that.
You're not saying chain link fence or nothing?
And that's not council's job. That's staff's job to figure it out. I mean, it's a good idea. I think it's a better idea, what you're talking about.
Right. Is that direction enough? Clear as mud?
Figure it out. We'll come up with some options to secure the building with proper screening that allows for visibility around it as well.
Yeah.
Faux painting as opposed to chain links, but we'll leave that to you.
Yeah, that's good.
Absolutely. Mike, did you have other thoughts?
So that's my direction, to do the fence and the screening is the direction, just to come back to us and let us know what you're going to do, either finish boarding it up or, you know, whatever.
Absolutely, Mike.
You got to give options. Although, let staff get going.
Okay, I'm walking in right now.
Okay, great. Great, Mike. We'll hold on just for a minute in case there is a need to finish up the conversation, but Arlene or Matt, or, I mean, I think you understand the idea.
Well, if there's consensus to board it up, I don't know why we need to come back.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of, I mean, if what Greg suggested is feasible, I think it's a much better idea, which is basically plywood and do some faux painting. That's off the top of my head. But we're not experts. I mean, staff, this is an administrative thing.
Right. We just don't want it to stick out like a sore thumb.
We don't want it to stick out like a sore thumb.
We don't want it like that forever, or even for, you know, three or four more months. So if we can improve upon it and just figure out how much it costs and whether it's going to look, sometimes plywood doesn't look so good up on the program, but maybe it does, you know?
Not that we haven't been filibustering, Mike, because I guess we haven't, it's one step above that, but we've been waiting for the conversation. How about some happy little clouds? And, and, Bob Ross, right?
No mistakes, only happy little clouds.
Well, welcome, Mike.
Whenever you make a mistake on the painting, you say, oh, there's no mistakes. You just turn it into something else.
Okay.
But as opposed to, I think, what you're saying, like a chain link fence with the...
We're over that.
Yeah, we're over it, and we'll...
Maybe there's a screen that can go, be applied to the building. Let them figure it out.
Like a wrap or whatever.
A wrap, yeah.
Do you want us coming back? I mean...
No.
Okay.
Not that, you know, if Mike's interested or anybody's interested, they can call you.
Yeah, call me. My people will talk to your people.
Right.
Figure something out.
Michael, micromanage from down there, Mike. How's that? You can, okay. Thank you so much, Peter, for bringing that up. Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
Mike, did you have any other thoughts on that? You're good. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Okay, we're going to move on where the, oh, my goodness, my goodness.
You did a motion and everything.
Yeah, there's been a motion and a second to look into our options, allow staff to...
Lean towards that solution if that works out. How's that?
Right.
Direction's probably enough, right?
Right. Directions enough.
I would say the motion was already made.
I withdraw the motion.
Good, we're good.
Okay, very good. Excellent. Thanks, everybody. Unless I'm missing anything, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Hello, Kathy. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Another year?
Yeah.
We're not getting older, Kathy, we're getting better.
Right, you can grow old, but you don't have to grow up.
That's right. That's right.
And good evening to everyone. Kathy McGrath for the record. The first thing I want to say is, what an upper to see all these young kids, and the recognition they got. I mean, they're already outstanding young citizens, but I just know how much it means to them, and to their parents. It's just, you know, everybody needs an attaboy. I mean, it's just wonderful. And as far as Mike, Scott, I told them tonight, I said, gee whiz, I understand his, his mother-in-law who passed was very ill, but I said, I had your T-shirt I was going to wear. I forgot, I didn't, I didn't check and see, but anyway. But I do want to say, Happy New Year to everyone, and I hope it's a good year for all of us. We're, you're going to have a lot of decisions to make, again, just as you have. Some of them are carrying over from last year, and there'll be a lot of new ones. And I know you all deliberate and do the, what you think is the best. You know, I have that favorite little saying, for the greater good. It might come back to bite me one day, but I think that's the way decisions should be made. What is going to benefit the maximum amount of people, no matter what the issue is? And the only issue I will mention now, very, very briefly, is my feelings about the Weeks fishing camp. I just hope when it comes up, that you make the decision that, I, I realize the developers are there to make money, but it's not just public access to it, and X amount of parking spaces, but equitable parking spaces. And I hope that, I know Ed Weeks will probably have suggestions better than I will, but, you know, it's, it's something that's very, very, very important. So, good luck, and you know I'll be right here listening to you. I really, you know, I think you've done a really good job, all of you. Let's face it, I've said before, we aren't, sometimes you don't all agree, but I think you're doing an outstanding job. And we won't talk about football.
Right, we won't. That's, that's very good. Thank you. We won't talk about college football.
How about the Dolphins?
Thank you, Kathy. Bonnie?
Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Whitmore. I'm fine. Get the Patriots in the Super Bowl. Couple of things come to mind. I took a short jaunt up north to New Jersey for about 10 days. I was never so glad to get home in all my life, coming back to Benita. I'm a transplant from up north, but I'll tell you, I love Benita. I think you guys are doing a great job. One caution about jumping ahead and covering up the Good Bread Grocery. Mike is right on. Nothing's going to happen to that that's feasible, based on the research that this group has to do, what the preservation board has to do, because we want to do it right. Don't be in a rush to put something up, and it's not going to happen in three to four months. I heard Amy say, you could be looking whatever you put up for a good 10 to 12 months, because hiring engineers, getting the permits, and the process I have learned from working on the McSwain House, and working through all of the people connected with community development, and all the inspections and whatever. I've gone to school again, even at my age, on the city of Benita, but I feel more confident now that we've got the right people in the right place, like in community development, and Arlene, I can always, you know, send her emails. And I just genuinely appreciate living here. So my only suggestion is, take your time and do what's right with the Good Bread Grocery, because it's important. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the city attorney's report.
I have nothing to report. I have asked David Theriak, the next time he's down, to give you guys an update on the BG mine litigation, but I want him to give you that update personally.
Sure, sure. Thank you very much. Okay. City manager items.
Good evening, mayor, council. We have before you, we're just looking for some direction. As we move forward with our FEMA required projects, one of the damages we have is that pedestrian bridge that crosses at the Bamboo property. We did have an engineer, bridging, bridging solutions review the bridge structurally, did an onsite inspection, and it is not appropriate for folks to be using it right now. We, and they are recommending a full replacement of the bridge. We've provided you with a couple of options here. It is staff's recommendation, should you choose to replace the bridge as is with that location, we would need to go after the continuing pursuing the FEMA funding at the 75% renewal, which would be about an out-of-pocket cost around $39,000 for the city. But we're still working through that process, and it is most likely that we would need to formalize an official time extension for that March 9 deadline that we have. If council chooses not to pursue the rebuild, we also still have the demolition process that we could do, and we are, and we are able to, you know, also at 75% refund to the city on that, that dollar amount. One thing to keep in mind is, we have not discussed this particular bridge yet with DPZ. You are getting ideas back from them, and we're not sure if they would have a recommendation that the bridge be in another location, and that would be further worked out through the development process with another developer who wins a potential, a letter of interest or request for proposals for the property. But these are the options we wanted to lay out before you. We would put a pretty aggressive game plan intact if we're going to pursue the ADA compliant replacement. We would need an aggressive bid process for that, and continue to keep FEMA in the process the entire way. But we're still working through them agreeing to the, the funding, because in essence, that's an upgrade from the existing structure.
I say just tear it down. Whatever developer's going to go in there and develop, they're going to put their own bridge in. When an anti-marine union had his plans, he had a different bridge with, you know, kayak storage underneath and things like that. So I don't think there's any reason to spend money on this, even though that we are going to get 75% back. I think it's just a waste of money.
You mentioned in, in the green sheet about a land lease. What is, does that affect you at all? I mean, if you take it down, because I sort of agree with what Mike is saying, but are we losing something?
Carly can, has reviewed submerged landings.
I've reached out to DEP to discuss that, because there's a chance that you can't put one back in once you take it out. So there is restraints, but I need to speak to her, and she's been out of the office for the holidays.
But that mainly impacts if there's going to be pilings into the ground. If they do a full span like we did on the other side from Depot Park, we don't need the land lease, right?
Correct. It only applies to the bottom of the river, so.
So most likely, they replace that bridge, it's going to be a full span anyway, so.
Oh, okay.
Considering the pace that FEMA appears to move at, I'm wondering if, so I'm inclined to agree with Mike, but I'm wondering if we can maybe do a little bit better, and that is, I mean, maybe we could get an extension for a very long period of time. So that, when we get to that point, maybe we can get, is there a timeline on this?
The FEMA extension? No, it has to be very specific. We, if, when we request the extension, it would be because we're at this stage in the bid process, and the contractor needs this amount of time to do it. It has to be very concrete.
But what about saying we're contemplating redevelopment of the area, and that process may take some years? And is there a possibility of getting an extension for that?
I don't think that would be specific enough.
I, I don't think that, part of the problem is.
Well, you just find out. I'm just saying, you're probably right, but I mean, if we could have our cake and eat it too, why not? It's just a phone call, right? Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
We can, we can explore, we were, you, you have to build a, a case for the extension showing that you are in the bid process, that, and, and that you, we've, we've already actually submitted this structural engineering report to them, so that their folks can start looking at it. But you lay out a timeline for your, for your extension, but we can, we can certainly speak to our.
Why don't we just tell them as long as the time it takes for them to give us our reimbursement?
I think it'll work, so.
Yeah.
It's over a year now, so we'll get back to you.
I, I think the odds are very low. I just don't know what the downside is to asking a question. Because otherwise, I agree with Mike.
I don't, I, I tend to agree with Mike too, but I don't want to lose that land lease. If you do the full span bridge, you're going to have to go back into the actual buildable space on each side. So that's one of the things, that's why they do the land lease, so you don't have to go so far out this way for the span.
To be ADA, it's got to go out into the buildable lane, anyway.
But maybe you go even further without the land lease underneath it, without the pilings. If you're going to do a full suspension, that's what my fear would be, is that now you've lost more usable space, and now we won't even be able to have a bridge across there. Which, at the end of the day, that's going to be up to the, who wins the bid, and do they want that? And is it a selling point? I think somewhat if it's, if it's a selling point, now they don't have to go all the way out to Old 41. I know it's not a long way, but now they don't have to go all the way out to Old 41 and come around and go down.
Well, what's the land, I follow what Greg's saying, but what decision do we have to make with respect to?
If we tear it down, you may lose the land lease underneath it.
That was my question.
Really?
Yeah.
They may not renew it. I know, just for the pilings, for the, for the lift at the fire department, they were very stringent on that, and if they gave us 30, 28 feet, if we wanted to go to 30 feet, it was a two-year wait process, and no guarantee on that.
That happened in Pelican Landing, too. Same thing.
So one of the, one of the theories that Carly and I have discussed is that the FEMA reimbursements are reimbursements to repair something as-is. You know, it's not a, it's not a giving you money to build what you wish you could have. It's, so what we are, we are looking at this, and all the requirements of both the DEP, the land lease, and FEMA sort of imply, we have to comply with all laws, including ADA. So to the extent our extension request for both the land lease, and we, we have talked about the possibility of doing a concurrent land lease extension now, and the idea of ADA, coming into ADA compliance may be a good case for asking for an extension altogether, because we're not just putting back the old bridge. We have to design and engineer and do everything, and that may take additional time, and we can't meet those deadlines. So maybe that's the.
I mean, I think that would be the way to do is, let's ask for that extension, because A, they're going to have to prove, approve something greater than what it was to begin with.
Yes.
So they're going to have to make that decision first and foremost, then at that point, we would go out to bid, go out for engineering, and check with the DEP about the land lease underneath it, because if we've got to add two or three more pilings left or right, or the other way.
I think what I'm hearing from the council is you want both those issues resolved at the same time. You don't want to give up one and possibly lose the other, so you're.
I would think so. I mean, and again, it's, let's be honest here, and hopefully FEMA's not listening. We're just kicking the can down the road so we can see what our options really are, because right now, we don't know. And we don't even know what the, if someone buys it, we don't know what they want. They may not want it altogether.
DPZ, because, I mean, I, I'm not even sure, you know, I'm not a designer or a planner, but would we want the bridge there anyway, if they're going to, if you're going to develop that property? Maybe there's a better use for a bridge, and it might be a totally different bridge, too. You know, much broader, or something like that, so. I think we, did we ask DPZ to look at it?
We, we reached out to them, but over the holiday, we weren't able to hear back from them yet. So we can continue to talk with them, and get more of an update from them as well. You're right, their recommendation may not be, that's not the exact location, they might have a different design for it as well.
If you look at some of the development along rivers, you know, they, they, if they have bridges, they're not those little one-person pedestrians, they're very broad bridges where you can really do something on there. So I don't, I'm sure, I would doubt FEMA would help us with that.
Well, the other thing to find out also, if we want to do it for safety reasons, either A, we could, I just know like the house is in Pine Island, out in, Pine Island Sound, and Matt, I'm sure you're familiar with it. As long as the pilings are still there, you can still rebuild it. So if we take the bridge down and leave the pilings in there, we can still rebuild it at a later time.
You got to consult with Greg.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
He's got a lot of ideas here.
Well, I'm just saying, I know I've had some family members out there that had those, and they would burn, and as long as the pilings didn't burn to the waterline, you could rebuild it out there. Otherwise, they're not giving you, the DE, I mean, the DEP will not let you.
I make a motion, you consult with Councilman DeWitt, every angle here.
And there are some rules here, obviously, that I, you know, thrown in there just enough to be dangerous. But Greg, is it once, if, if the four pilings are there, to use the example, or is it one of these things where if they've gone beyond 51% of the original structure? You know what I mean? So depending on which standard applies here, do we know? If the pilings are there, or is it, if it's gone beyond 49% of the original structure?
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're dealing with permitting issues, you're dealing with planning issues, which may say the bridge is better somewhere else, and you're dealing with draconian FEMA reimbursement issues, which, you know, we can ask, but I can tell you, they are draconian, and so it's not likely that FEMA's going to authorize a new bridge in a new location.
Right.
If, at best, they might authorize a compliant bridge in the current location. So it, it doesn't hurt to ask, but, but those are really the three issues.
I think the first thing would be to ask, can we get an ADA compliant bridge, based on 75% of their money?
And that we, and we have that.
And that would be the first thing to do, is ask that, and then let's proverbial, that will kick the can down the road, at least. Like you said, they're not going to make a snap judgment. They're going to look at it, you know, a couple months.
The, the first issue is an extension, as Derek outlined, and, and to pose the question.
But the extension should be based on the ADA compliance and all that.
Carly has raised that issue, so we're, we're sort of, but we, I think, I think the direction we're, we're looking for collectively is, you want to see both those items addressed, and to the extent we can bring in other stakeholders to get their opinions on it, we will, but we want to make sure that those two fundamental issues are addressed. Because, for instance, you could have a third-party developer come in later on, buys the property, wants to develop it, but DEP may look more favorably on a municipally-owned asset than a private asset that's going to have new design characteristics and possibly in a different location. So I mean, I think we're talking about preserving our rights, kind of coming back to person DeWitt's example. Those issues out in Pine Island Sound, I've got some cases on those things, too, and they are no longer, DEP's no longer recognizing grandfathering. They're trying to eliminate the, the stilt houses and, and out by Marco Island, over on the East Coast, and in Charlotte Harbor. The case law supports the property owners who've maintained them for a long time, but we don't want to be in that kind of situation. We're just trying to keep something alive. We're trying to keep it on life support, and trying to keep the reimbursement available, so. I think, I think that's the direction we're, we're looking for, because then we can run with it.
I hate to ask this question, I don't know why it's in my head, but Matt, I looked at some of those pictures, you know, and, and in a flooding situation, that bridge is basically underwater, you know.
It collected debris in the storm. It didn't fully go under, but it.
Oh, you want to make it 90 feet high?
You want to make it 90 feet high?
Yeah, 90 feet high would be good.
Okay.
So, you know, I think there's some problems in the design, even if we replace it for ADA. Is that true, or not true?
Well, I don't want to play instant expert, but, you know, the IBE bridge is a FEMA bridge that was built by FEMA in 1997, right, to replace another bridge. It's higher. So there's got to be some flexibility in it.
But there are a lot of questions, but I would start first by getting an answer from DPZ if we can get it, because I think that's really important.
Okay. Counsel, any further discussion? All right.
We'll come back with additional information.
Have direction enough there? Okay. Great. Anything else under city managers' items?
I just wanted to remind everyone of the January 8 golf course workshop that will be here at City Hall. Charter Review Committee will be 4:00 PM, the first meeting on January 14th, a Monday. We will have our stormwater utility presentation on January 16th. February 5 is a Tuesday evening, we will have an open workshop with DPZ on the Form-based code, continuing. They will have their presentation at our regular council meeting as well.
Arlene, what was that golf course one?
January 8.
At what time?
It was at 5:30.
Can you just email us the whole list, please?
I'll email the schedule.
And I will not be able to be here, I apologize.
Yeah, me neither.
The evening of the 8th.
But that's just a workshop, not.
Right, no, understood, but sure, sure.
It is going to be advertised if we do show up correctly.
Yes, as a regular public workshop, and what we normally announce during those meetings is that you'd be in attendance, but you'll reserve your.
What time is it?
5:30.
Oh, because I have a Citrus Park meeting at 3:30.
Oh, I think it was 5:30. But we'll send it out in email.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Arlene, anything else?
That's all I have.
Matt?
No. Well, Burnwood, we'll, we'll be doing railroad crossing repairs at Burnwood Parkway, as well as Old 41 south of Benita Beach Road, in, starting on January 6th, and, and working through to the 14th. It'll start probably up at Burnwood, is, is our current game plan, and then as that work gets completed, we'll move down into the Old 41 area.
Okay.
Real quick on that, Matt, is there a way that we can move that sign on Old 41? Because right now, it's right behind a tree, and you can't really read what the heck it's saying.
Yeah.
One on Beet Road Works, but the one on, on Old 41 just really doesn't work. It's right behind a tree. By the time you catch it, you can't read it. Yeah. You'll catch the date, not what's going on, or what's going on, not the date, if possible. And Chief Tagle thanks you for the one on Old 41.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks. Move on to approval of the minutes, and this would be for December 19th, 2018. Motion to accept in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. Council member items. Amy Corumba.
Happy New Year to everybody, and I do want to say that I've been receiving. Happy New Year to everybody, and I do wanna say that I've been receiving emails from our constituents in regard to the bridge on Big Carla's Bridge Replacement, asking if they could, we can do anything to help them. I don't know what the solution is, but I did ask Arlene to explore some things. So it's not, you know, it's not over in that sense. And there's disappointment that they wouldn't have a fuller hearing. That's the same old thing we had before, so that's still. And then the other constituent report I had in regard to JetBlue flying over, again, the same area there, and they said there was some noise pollution, but do we have anything to do with addressing that at all?
And JetBlue coming, coming on, that, that traffic pattern, we all recognize it, right? If you're sitting on the right-hand side of the plane, after you've turned around, you're looking at Lover's Key, right?
Yes, it's coming right over there, and they're saying low over there. So--
Right.
Do we have any--
You know who knows a lot about that?
We could just talk to somebody, but we can't, it's not, we're not, we're not very effective, right?
And I've dealt with this issue for other municipalities in the county. What happened is that the FAA instituted a new traffic management program along the East Coast. I think it's called Flowcar. Basically, they want all aircraft at all airports going east and west out. So not directing them north, not directing them south. When they take off and land, they want them going east or west. In the whole network, it works better that way for them, keeping the air, especially along the East Coast, where everything's kind of vertical, keeping everybody, you know, in their lanes. So an ask like, can RSW redirect planes across, you're basically asking to make an exception to an entire East Coast--
But there's some deal with the height, because I know that, in response to your question--
Yeah.
Estero, before they were a city, that was the ECCL, we were all over this issue. So you might wanna give a ring to Nick Bezos or somebody like that, if she could--
This would, would--
It has to do with the height.
That it's the height, but also east, west, that's a further south from, I mean, they're not saying go north. They're just saying, why do you have to go this way? Go in a different way. But, but, but where I was interested was that they quoted that there was some kind of a noise test that was done in 2011, all right? And my question is, are they done on a more frequent basis, or could we ask them to do a noise test, or what, what opportunity is there to just explore it further?
They, there was a, when the airport layout plans, and they're, they did, they were required by FAA law to go through a study process. They were required to notice the local jurisdictions within that area. We probably were not noticed, because I believe it's a couple, just a few miles. Once that's completed, and it was completed in 2011, your official rights to challenge or to, to test the, the airport's compatibility standards are closed out. So until they come through another process, that won't occur. Now, what I would say is that the Port Authority, you know, the county, is the, is the agency that kinda will start that process. So I think it's a, we would probably wanna just reach out to the county and make sure that when they start any new directions that will trigger that test again, we wanna be involved in that process. Because you can be involved, even if you are not one of the noticed parties, but unless you're looking in the federal register, you know, for some obscure reference, you're not going to define that.
Well, they copied Commissioner Keiker and me. I don't know if they copied anybody else, but those are the ones that I saw in my email. So they also, you know, they approached the proper entity there. But my question was whether we could ask some questions that would help these constituents, because they wanna follow up on it. They asked us for help. We could say, no, we really can't help you, which is, that's the answer. I'm comfortable doing that. But if there are a couple of things we could do, it would be nice.
We could, we could work through the, the Port Authority Director. And there, and there are, I don't remember, but there are contingencies where they will take different directions, but they have to work with the airlines and sort of coordinate. And I believe it was done for Fort Myers Beach to a degree when they complained.
And they're not required to do it, like, periodically? I mean, is, at all? No. So once it's done, it's sort of a done, that's the report. Okay. I understand it better. I didn't understand that at all.
Okay. Let's see what we can do for options, and obviously, more information is always appreciated, as opposed to less information. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Amy. Greg?
Nothing, just Happy New Year, and here's to a great 2019, we hope.
Dynamite, dynamite. Thank you. Laura?
Ditto.
Ditto? Okay, very good. Peter?
Triple ditto.
Triple ditto. Mike?
Happy New Year.
Fred?
Yeah, Happy New Year, and one other party we might talk to on this, because the FAA and other people are involved. Why don't we put our, whatever the request is in writing, and we'll turn it over to Congressman Rooney.
Right. Okay, very good. And I just wanna once again reiterate Sheriff Mike Scott, for his years of dedication and devotion and service to Benita Springs, and his family has sacrificed a lot. They're going through some hard times right now, but I just cannot thank him enough and his entire team. You saw the outpouring of support here for, for him, and from his team, and, yeah, he was the sheriff. He was absolutely the sheriff. But you wanna talk about a people person, down on the street level, not one pressing buttons from the ivory tower. Very much in, in, in touch with his communities, and very much in touch with his team and everybody that, look, we've all, we all know Sheriff Mike Scott to a degree, and for those that have really put their shoulder to the wheel and to the blade, as so to speak, as I have, and really gotten down into the trenches with him, and the governor and others, when, you know, the hurricanes and so many other times. I just, I cannot thank him enough for his service. And on a personal level, I think you know, he and I are, are pretty good friends, and this doesn't give me, I have to be selective now when I bug him, I think, a little bit, to try to keep in touch. And I miss you, buddy. I'll love you always, and thank you to you and your amazing family for everything you've done. So, Happy 19 to everybody. Uh, council, is there anything else? We will make a motion to adjourn. Thanks, everybody. Happy 2019.